Call the order, go out to order regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is Thursday, June 18th, and it's close enough to 6:00 P.M. Mr. Olgin, would you take the role?
Yes, I will. Chairman Pranzo?
Here.
Vice Chair Putrick?
Here.
Commissioner Petty?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Present.
Commissioner Fenstermaker? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everybody stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Did the commissioners, were the commissioners able to download the minutes from Mr. Olgin's email?
I didn't have any questions.
You got all the pages?
Yeah. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner, I sent the minutes hard copy and they were emailed.
Right. I'm just making sure they got it. Is there any discussion, comments, questions? I have none.
None for me.
Could I have a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the minutes from the May 7th, I believe, meeting.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Putrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Public hearing. First Street zone change, PZ-1530ZC. This is a presentation, discussion, recommendation of a change request by Piero Butulato to change the zoning on approximately .36 acres located at 680 East First Street, Florence. Mr. Olgin, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Good evening. Tonight I'll be giving the presentation for this zone change. If you look on your monitor in front of you, you'll see an image of the property that we're talking about tonight. It's located on First and 79. It's actually a little bit to the west of the first property there. Here's a close-up of the image. So the property we're talking about tonight is approximately .36 acres, and it's currently zoned R2. Tonight's zone change request is to zone change the property from an R2 zoning, which is residential zoning, to a B2 highway business commercial zoning. Give you some background on the property and the owner. As you, as most of you may know, Piero and his father, Mr. Butulato, they came to me with the intent to buy this property that's located here. Currently, there's a chiropractor office there, and I believe it's another use that was there, quite small. There's some side issues that, that exist there. When they purchased the property, we spoke about the possibility of buying the lot behind it to put in a proper parking lot, improvements that are required for a B2 business. They agreed, they purchased the property, and here they are today asking for a zone change. Our general plan supports this zone change. Currently, the designation that's in place is the HMU designation, so it does support rezoning this property to a B2. So together, there's going to be two lots, which will be combined into one if the zone change is successful. They talked about some uses, mainly being a restaurant, coffee shop on one side, and keeping the chiropractor, chiropractor office on the other side. Obviously, with the addition of the back lot, we're going to need to put inside improvements and also focus on setbacks, and also the A dot right away that's required in the front of the property. The zoning that's around this property, you have to the north, Territory Square, PUD. I always forget my maps. Here we go. So you got this property to the north, which is our Territory Square, PUD. A portion of the Territory Square is being utilized as we speak. They're putting a town aquatic center and the town library on it. To the east, we have a highway business commercial zone. To the south, you have Neighborhood Multifamily Zoning District. To the west, we have more residential and on-site, obviously, it's vacant. Currently, as I mentioned, we got the lot in question tonight is zoned residential, R2. The lot in front of it is already zoned B2. Proposed zoning is B2. We took the opportunity, staff, took the opportunity to have a neighborhood meeting on the site that's next to it, right in front, the chiropractor office, and we had three, three people that came to the meeting, and their main concerns were just what uses are going to be there. After we explained to them the restaurant concept, they were, they were excited. Also, the fact being that there's going to be some nice improvements on the backside of this, of this lot. It's just going to add to the area. We're at, we're going to be asking for landscaping, blocktop parking, you know, streetlights, all the improvements that are needed for a new business like this. So staff is, is excited. We've got no letters of complaints, no, no phone calls from anybody who's upset with this as of yet. The owner's here tonight. If you wish to ask them questions, we do have another meeting scheduled July 20th for Town Council. It'll be the second public hearing, first reading of the ordinance, and then we have the final decision meeting on August 3rd of this year. So do you have any questions for staff? It is a public hearing, so after the comments, I'd...
Actually, I was going to open up to the public before I opened up to the commission. So we'll open up to the public if anyone here would like to make a comment, question. I'm going to turn it over to the commission and close the public comment, turn it over to the commission. Anyone have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to just get a little overview of, I'm not sure I understand with the two, the two lots. So this, this house that's here that has a business, that's going to stay?
Is here? You're talking about this, this piece right here?
Yeah, the front lot.
Yeah, that's, that's an actual business as of right now. There's an actual chiropractor on one side. It's actually a building that's split in two.
Restaurant going.
The restaurant will be on the south side. It's actually split in two. So to the north of, if you took that, that, that property or that structure, and you split it down the middle to the north, it's the existing chiropractor office. He's been there for a while. And to the south of that is where they're going to accommodate the restaurant use.
Okay. Okay. I got it.
Sorry about that.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple. For the younger, Mr. Butulato. Please state your name for the record.
Piero Butulato.
Mr. Butulato, just one question. Do you own this property at this time?
Yes.
Okay. And for staff, I understand that there was a public meeting. Are there any objections in writing?
No.
Okay. And as far as I can tell, this zone change is in compliance with the 2020 general plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That satisfies me. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a question about the, the plan because it, it sounds like you're leaving the chiropractor in there and you're adding a restaurant as well in the space. Is that what, did I understand, Mr. Olgin, correctly?
Yes, the building is a split in two. That's how it was before we bought it. It used to be a hair salon. So there's one, it used to be a hair salon on one side and the chiropractor on the side. What we're doing is we're fixing up the other side to do a restaurant.
So it's not going to be a very big...
No, it's not going to be very big.
And do you have any sort of a timeline, just out of curiosity?
I, probably a few months. We're just fixing up the inside. We redo the roof. It's little things that we need to finish, so.
Okay. And you're selling coffee there?
It's going to be like a, it's like a Starbucks kind of thing, and like cold sandwiches and like cold salads. That's it. Nothing too...
Sounds like good business for the courthouse. I hope people don't get run over trying to cross the street.
So yeah, so just real quick, nothing too, too crazy.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Could I have a motion, please?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we forward to the mayor and town council, a favorable recommendation to the proposed First Street Zone Change, Case PZ-15-30-ZC.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Petty, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Moving right along. Downtown Commercial Zone Change, PZ-1537ZC, PZC-3714ZC. This is a presentation, discussion, recommendation of a zone change request by the Town of Florence, uh, zone change by the Town of Florence to change existing zoning from neighborhood office, highway business commercial, and multifamily residential downtown commercial. Mr. Olgin, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do. If you would give me a moment. So, as you mentioned, this is Mardisi Zone Change. This one's kind of exciting for me, kind of near and dear to my heart. This, this, this zone change has actually started, this is the third time we've been through this on this area. To give you some perspective of where it's located, obviously, it's in the core of town. You've got Ruggles to the north. You've got Penal Street to the east along here, and then here to the southeast, I have Butte, and then we have Quartz, I'm sorry, we have, we have Quartz to the west. So together, there's actually about 93 properties that make up this square that we're talking We started this back, I believe it was 2012. Ben Gero's son was the first to go through the process to expand outside of the D.C. zoning district, and successfully he was approved on four properties. That's right across the way from you, Chairman Pranzo. About a year after that, we started the process to bring more properties that were outside of the narrow corridor that had D.C. zoning. The zoning is kind of exciting because it takes, it, it's specific to the area for historic properties. We first came up with it to help businesses open up in town, to help loosen up some of the requirements. As we found out, it wasn't enough. We did some tax amendments to add some more changes to that, that zoning district. One of the biggest ones was to relax the parking requirements. This has been really big in helping some of these businesses move here to the downtown area. What we're doing here with these properties outside this, outside of the main street area is it provides mixed use. D.C. zoning provides a mixed use zoning where it allows businesses and residential to coexist. As you know, a lot of these properties that are in this area, in this square, they're historic. They're set not by any rules. I mean, they, they violate setbacks. They're too close to the front, and some of these businesses were having issues trying to place parking lots and other improvements to the site. So now with the new D.C. zoning, that's all been relaxed. It's a lot easier for them to move in, and these properties that you see that are listed 1 through 10, one of them being our own, which is Pudilla Park, number one on top, four of them belong to the Penal County, and the rest of them are property owners that, and they're all residential properties, except for this one here, which is currently owned by Tandy Smith. It's the town garden area. So as you see in front of you, this is another 10 properties. Last year, we did 14, or that we had done, I think it was two. And when I first came here, we had actually rezoned all of the main streets. So this is just a continuation of that. This is per the general plan. The area is designated as DMU, downtown mixed use. So the zoning is supported by our 2020 general plan, and as I mentioned, it's, it's good for the town. It's good for new businesses that want to locate in this area. The whole idea here is to help this area be, become pedestrian friendly, and I believe that by rezoning these properties and the ones that have already been through this, we're getting to that point. As you all may know, we had a current business that's looking at taking or moving into the Gentry Building. Part of it has to do with they don't have to worry about parking. So we're seeing some positive changes with this. And like I said, I've been working on this for quite a while, being the liaison to the historic district for seven years. Anyways, if you have any specific questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. What you have in front of you, and it should be in your packet, is a list of all the owners that are part of this application. Like I said, you won't have one from the town, obviously, but any specific questions I can answer, I'd, I'd be happy to.
I'll open up to the commission.
You want to open the public hearing first, sir, or you want to do that after you open?
There's nobody here, so I'll do it after we're done.
Okay, that's fine.
I just have a question about the, the four county buildings.
Yes.
How, how does our rezoning impact the county's operation?
It doesn't do anything to what they're doing now. What I did was I, I've been speaking with Steve Abraham, who's the plane manager over at the county. He's well aware I've got emails that support the zoning on all four properties. So, and I actually paid a visit to the four properties to let them know what's going on because I, I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure if Steve had told him, but it's not going to change what they're doing. If they ever decide to sell the property, it'll be easier, an easier sell. I, I would imagine if they decide to sell the property, but it's not going to affect what's going on right now.
Okay. Thanks. Please.
Thank you. You had the meeting on the 10th of June?
Yes, sir, I did.
And there was one person there in support. Since that time, has there been any other public comment to you guys?
Yes, one today. She's the owner of the property in the corner by the, these over here. So she called asking about what it was and more interested as to what's going on and why. I haven't had any recent, on this application, besides her and the one person that showed up to the neighborhood meeting, there hasn't been no other questions or comments.
And the lady today, she was just calling to find more information about it and didn't express a positive or negative?
She actually, it's kind of, it's quite humorous. She was kind of upset that she wasn't included in the zone change, and I told her that staff would look into that possibility, but she has a vacant property, so it's a little different situation. The majority of these properties that are being rezoned are going through the process tonight. There's, there's historic properties on them, so this works actually quite well. But that's it as far as a public comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
As a, as a last comment, there is still about a little over 10 properties left that haven't rezoned, and staff will work with them to possibly move forward with rezoning them eventually if, if they choose to do so. Everybody that's on this list, obviously, except for the town and the county, have signed 2007 waivers and owner permission forms, given us permission to move forward with this.
Mr. Olgin, are there any comments in writing to staff about this zoning change?
No, sir.
Okay. And I need you to educate me a little bit.
Yes.
On the general plan, it shows, it's labeled as downtown mixed use. Now, in our ordinances, there is nothing that designated downtown mixed use. So we're going to downtown commercial. And as best as I can read your presentation and what I see in the ordinances, I'm not going to end up with a circle K on the corner of Sixth and Quartz.
No.
Okay, so we're going, we're going to keep it pedestrian friendly? We're going to honor zero lot lines? We're...
Some of the properties that we have, that we, that gone through the process last year were big enough to accommodate that type of use, and they had B2 zoning, which would have allowed that. That's no longer the option. They're D.C., so we're looking at pedestrian friendly uses. As, as it actually says in the 2020 general plan on our DMU, it talks about the type of possible uses that would fit in these areas, and they're usually low traffic, more pedestrian friendly type of uses. So, yeah, I was, and also keep in mind that the historic district protects these properties that are in place. It's somewhat of a challenge to demo these properties that are historic. So there's a lot of layers of protection for the properties, which in turn would prevent some of those bigger businesses.
Well, I sympathize with you. I can come up with five right off the top of my head that are bulldozers ready. They're falling in on themselves, and I'd be very happy to see them go away. They're an eyesore, especially next to that park. Okay. Is there going to be any, now that we, we turn these properties into commercial, there's residential properties in there right now. So I'm assuming there won't be any increase in taxes, property tax, because of this zoning change?
I made a phone call to Penal County, actually, the assessors, asking that exact question. One of my customers, not customers, one of my, the people that applied for this, I believe it was, this property here had that exact question, and what I got from, from the county was that, no, if the use stays the same, residential, then the taxes aren't, aren't affected. However, if a business goes in place, even if it's business in front and commercial on the back, then yes, it will change, only if that happens.
Right.
And they showed me the ordinance and everything.
All right, well, it's a boon for the property owner because now the property's value is by the square foot and not by the lot, so.
One of the biggest advantages I've seen that put a lot of relief on some of these owners was that they had property that was already zoned NO. So in theory, if they were to move out, if the property went vacant for more than three months, they couldn't use that use as a residential use anymore because it's commercial.
Right.
Not conforming with this zoning, that, that issue's not there anymore.
Good, good. Um, let's see. All right, I'm out of questions. Anything else from the...
No, I shouldn't.
Could I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Gilbert, I almost forgot. I'll open up to the public.
Good catch.
Any public comments? Close for the public. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we forward to the mayor and town council, a favorable recommendation for the proposed D.C. zone change, PZ-1537ZC-PZC-3714-ZC.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Petty and seconded by Commissioner Putrick. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
Oving right along.
I took the words right out of my mouth. Okay. Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 50. Discussion, approval, disapproval of a preliminary plat application for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 50. Mr. Olgin?
Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner, this application is a preliminary plat application for Anthem. As you're all familiar with, this is Unit 50. It was submitted by Baxter Design Group on behalf of Polty Homes. The subject site is 43 acres in size, and it's located east of Hunt Highway, north of Merrill Ranch Parkway, and west of Felix Road. And this image here shows you the location. Right up here. So this plat, and not to bore you because we've been through this quite often, but it is in the Sun City portion of the Merrill Ranch, the Anthem at Merrill Ranch area, and it's currently being graded for, for new homes. The plat includes 118 single-family residential lots, and it's got two points of ingress, egress, and a third one that is for the future. The main collective for them, for the first access point is off of Felix Road, and that's a, so we have a minor arterial, which is Merrill Ranch Parkway for the second point of access. And this subdivision will eventually be connected to Unit 56. The average lot size for this subdivision is 7,614 square feet. Lot sizes, they range from 6,000-plus square feet to 12,000-plus square feet. The density for the subdivision is 2.6 dwelling, dwelling units per acre. The subdivision, as with most of the subdivisions that are here in the Anthem area, they're planned with green belts, walking trails, all kinds of amenities for the people that live in the area. It's approximately 17.5 acres that are dedicated to open space. The area is zoned PUD, which is R1, a single-family residential. Staff found that this, this, this particular plat is in conformance with all zoning codes and also the Anthem at Merrill Ranch PUD, and we talked about the two points of access and the third one that would be there for the future, and it meets density and open space requirements. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat. We have the applicant here tonight, which is Dan Bono. If you have any questions, not really much, a whole lot to say about this one. Any questions for staff?
I have a, I need a little education. Just help me out. Bear with me. If I look at the, the PUD at Unit 50, it calls out the size of the unit as 34 and a half acres, and we have 43 acres proposed. Now, I understand this unit represents a postage stamp worth of land as compared to the whole project. As we move forward, are we going to eliminate units because we're using more acreage now than what was originally proposed in the PUD? How are we going with this? Or are we making up for lost ground?
Chairman, members of the commission, right now, there's, the number of units is lower than the projected density of, that we had envisioned for the project. So we are losing, we are losing units overall. So right now, I think when the zoning was approved, it was approved for up to 11,000-plus units, and at the rate that we're going at now, it's probably, I believe it's about 8,500 units. So we are, they haven't built to the, to the density that was projected by the PUD.
Right, yeah, we're well below the density as far as the PUD is concerned, and I have no problems with the project. These people know their product, and they know how to, how to make it work. I was just curious. When, when I get the write-up, I compare it to the PUD, and then these little discrepancies just make you ask the question. Sir?
The boundaries, the boundaries of some of the parcels change as they, as they lot and how much open space they have and so forth, but I'll let Dan, go ahead, Dan.
Chairman, members of the commission, Dan Bono with Polty Homes. To answer your question, when we went through and did the original PUD, Unit 50 would have been done with just the residential area because we had a golf course separated out. The 43 acres that's identified on the plat, as you see it, does have about a eight-to-10 acre tract that is part of the golf course. So as we're going through and plating around the golf course, we are actually plating tracts of land that are in the golf course just to dedicate it as a tract of land. We do have a deed restriction in place with the county, with a legal description for the entire golf course, but as we go through and make changes with little slip... But as we go through and make changes with little slivers here and there, we end up deed and property back and forth between the HOA and the golf course. So it's, hopefully, that kind of answers the discrepancy between the original PUD with, I think you mentioned 35 acres and the current 43. Primarily, it's because when we did the initial mapping, it would have been just for the unit itself. This one takes into account some of the golf course area that's adjacent to it.
Great, great. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other question or comments? I'll open up to the public.
Not a public hearing.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Chair, it's not a public hearing, you say, this was decided by the commission, so motion would be appropriate?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Under new business, you're right. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for case PZ-15-29-PP, Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 50.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Petty, seconded by Commissioner Garcia to approve Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 50, PZ-1529PP. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Call to the public.
I can be the public for one second because I wanted to share something. Mark Gekoff, Community Development Director, Town of Florence. I do want to give you a couple of updates. We are still working on the signalization of diversion dam road and Highway 79. Also, improvements to diversion dam road, at least from 79 to Bolling. We're just having run into a few items on that project that have kind of made it a little bit more difficult than we initially envisioned, but it is, it is still going forward. That signalization will be there. Of course, the intersection is offset, so it's not a direct, you know, diversion dam and first are not directly opposed to each other. So it still is an offset intersection, but it will improve that situation. And then also, hopefully, next month, we'll be looking at opening the interim Main Street extension, so that will make that connection to Highway 79. We're working with ADOT and trying to get that last part of that roadway done. I'm hoping that we can close the loop on that in July and open that up. We do also plan on having the Aquatic Center open for July 4th activities. It'll be the first operational day of that facility. And on the Taco Bell, we keep asking when they offer updates on that, and it does look like we'll probably get the construction drawings this month, hopefully, and start to go forward on that project soon. So a few things to share with you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? And I'll close from the public. Call to the commission.
Yeah, I'll just mention, Mark and I talked about, we do a thing over at the county that I like. We get, we have an agenda item that tells us how the Board of Supervisors handled each of the, each of the issues that we sent to them. So we get, they voted yes, and here's why, yada, yada, yada. So I asked Mark if we could get that for our town council so we know how they voted to take our recommendation or not, and added it as an agenda item. So he said he can do that, so.
Anyone else? Well, I'm going to stick my foot in it. The minutes are quickly becoming my pet peeve. Got a whole diatribe copied from Mr. Olgin's presentations, and they're fantastic. Nothing against him. And then the icing on the cake is the commissioners had some questions. I'm wondering, if we can't save ourselves a lot of headache, I'm wondering if it's even legal, if we can just make the recording that's being done as our official minutes. It would be much easier because we already know what Mr. Olgin said, and there's really nothing in here that shows you how the commissioner's participated. So it's just a seed, something to think about. Any other questions or comments? I'm good. Okay, then, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Petrick to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.